I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the great public for which it stands, on my nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Before the start of tonight's regular meeting, the Board met an executive session to discuss some personnel matters and some litigation matters. We have a presentation tonight from the Central Bucks Ambulance Chief. Take a mic, please. Good evening.
Hello.
You're on.
We're looking to, short and simple, is to extend our millage from a quarter mil to a half mil. The anticipation in our 10-year planning, most recent 10-year planning, showed with the sudden, and I mean sudden, decrease in reimbursement rates that we should be concerned within the next year and a half to two years for extended planning on capital purchasing and operational funding. That's the simple of it. I want to go with questions from that point.
I would note that the provisions of the Second Class Township Code at 5368205 permit going to one half a mil without any referendum. Board can do that if you choose to.
We've been provided with the details from the last 12 months. And we get regular updates from the Central Bucks Ambulance, so I have no problem with their accounting processes and procedures. Thoughts?
Just more of a question around what we put into the pot for you guys. How does that compare to other townships? And are we in the middle of the pack, at the upper end, at the lower end? How does that compare to what other people or townships are paying?
Right now, Doylestown Township, and I am a resident of Doylestown Township, so I check my own tax bill to figure this out. It is at the lower end compared to the other townships. You're a quarter mil and everybody else is a half mil. So it is on the lower, oh, except for Buckingham, sorry. But we're going there next, so.
Except for Buckingham.
Buckingham. Everybody else is at a half mil. Now, you know, millage is different everywhere, so it's very hard to compare apples to oranges with different townships. But if you take how many people live here, how much the township contributes to the ambulance, you're probably around $9 a year as an average. The other townships are more closer to 13, 14. So it is the lower side of it. Like Doylestown Borough, for example, is about $13 a year per household tax money.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any questions?
This would be something you would take up at the budget time, so when you would do your budget resolution, if you were inclined to do so, you would include the increase in your budget resolutions.
I guess my only concern, this is the first I'm really hearing about the amount, if I understand it correctly, you want to double what we're paying now next year.
Well, I don't know, maybe it explains it better with the millage. It's not really double. I mean, it is a quarter to a half, but the way the millage, I don't know. It's like, based on your assessment, a thousand, I don't know, that many dollars. But it works out.
Based on each individual's assessment.
But if the millage is 150,000 this year that you receive via millage, you're expecting 300,000 next year. I picked these numbers.
We receive 54,000.
Thank you. So the 54,000 you received this year, next year would be 108, which is twice.
Correct, that's the goal.
Okay, that was really my question, was it's double. Anyway, that's pretty extreme to double anything. No disparaging about the service. I was there. So, you know, I understand and I appreciate it, and so that's not even part of the discussion. I'm now on this side, looking at going out and saying, we're going to double the millage just for this one entity, and I need some justification other than, you know, this, that, and the other. There's legislation in Harrisburg that's also helping, you know, get the payments and pending legislation. Why aren't they working on?
The legislation actually does us no favors. It was a thought, but it doesn't change a thing for us. The legislation is written as it is now, not to get off key. It's written to get out of committee. And in order to get out of committee, it has to agree with the insurance's terms. So when that, if that legislation were to actually pass, it would make a lull what we can actually do today, which means I could accept 30% on the dollar as payment in full, which we can't do.
I'm just looking at.
House Bill 347.
I'm sorry?
House Bill 347.
Yeah. And House Bill 339, and it seems like they're working to solve some of the problems. Don't misunderstand me.
No, I get it. The only reason I know is because I've been part of legislation committee for the last 10 years, so it's been a battle for nearly two decades, and it's not going to change.
Okay.
But neither here or there.
Any other questions? We have the numbers.
Can I ask one more question?
Absolutely.
You mentioned, Jeff, that we could just make it up to a half. Is that, as opposed to putting it into our regular millage and paying a certain amount?
You can make it have a separate line item millage for the rescue ambulance squad, yes.
Which we do now.
Yeah, I know we do.
It should not be in your general fund millage.
Basically, the choice is either you go to referendum, or because of the way the state law is written, the township laws are written, you can go to a half mil without referendum. Basically, you could vote for yourself.
Which is, I think, how it should be. I think that's what we got elected for, to make that decision. So I'm not shying away from making a decision to increase it. I just want some clarification on that allocation.
Sure. And the answer to the question that led up to this was Doylestown Township and Buckingham Township were the only two that are below a half mil. So we're trying to bring everybody up to a half mil, which in essence of the dollars would, should equivalate to solving the problems over the next 10-year plan that was designed for.
Just one more question, then I'll. The millage confuses me. If you could put the municipalities and how much dollars per household, I can relate a little bit more to that. When you're eight millage, half a mil, quarter a mil, and that is so confusing because it's so different. So that would be beneficial for me to make a decision to say, here are the municipalities, and per household, this one is so much, this one is so much, this one is, and then I got something to, at least I can hang my hat on.
Didn't you give that to us at one point?
Yes.
I think we have that.
I don't have it.
Doylestown Borough, like, you ever, because everybody's different.
Exactly.
It's different for everybody. You own a house that's assessed more, you pay more. So on an average, Doylestown Borough's residents pay $13 a year in tax.
Can you?
Use the mic.
I'm talking to the mic, thank you.
Doylestown Township pays approximately $9 a year per household in EMS tax. Buckingham Township is about $12 a year per household for EMS tax. New Hope and Salisbury are hard because they're actually paying for something a little bit different. I mean, they're paying for EMS tax, but they both come out about $11 per household in both New Hope and Salisbury. Does that help?
Does help.
Barbara, I do have one question, especially for the residents. I know we're not making any decisions tonight or anything, but considering this, one question they may have is, what is it for? I appreciate you, you said it was a reduction of reimbursements and that, but is it for employees, is it for just general operating expenses, is it for new?
Tax money all goes to our capital account. That buys ambulances, that buys equipment. Heart monitor is $50,000. An ambulance just went up, what are we paying now, 90? 90 to $100,000. So that's where the tax money goes. It's a separate capital account. It's on our, everything we send to you.
Explain the story of where it goes, yeah.
You can see it.
Thank you.
Lee, do you want to take the mic, please? Thanks.
Question has nothing to do with the great work that they do. If you just use the numbers Rick asked for, it sounds like we're underpaying at the moment, but they want to take us to $18 now a year, as opposed to 13 for Doylestown, and it sounds like they're ready to double Buckingham's from 12 to 24. So they're trying to talk in millage as opposed to what it costs per resident. And maybe we could reframe that. Maybe we should be paying three-eighths of a mil to be at the right spot instead of a half. But I think it needs to be talked about in the nature of how much you're paying per household as opposed to what your millage is. That's my point.
I think that was Rick's point, too.
Yeah, if all things being equal, a year from now, what are we all going to be paying? Are we all going to be paying relatively the same or not? And if ours goes 18, and I don't think you said it, I think you implied that everybody else is getting doubled, is that true?
How lucky.
Just Buckingham.
Okay. Anybody out there? Joe, do you have a question? You want to take the mic, please?
Well, as I say, the fire department, who are volunteers, they have barbecue, carnivals, everything to raise money. Besides probably getting money from the municipalities, there's also various ambulance services that do the same thing. I've never seen Doylestown do anything than ask for money from the citizens via a letter or from you guys via mileage. So right now, I'm not for this improvement. They haven't done anything for themselves that I can, I personally can see.
I get an annual appeal letter. Yeah, I do, yes. Every year, annual appeal letter, maybe some, twice a year.
I just want to remind the Board that when we went to the quarter mil for the, the Board did put it out at the time to a general election in November, and it did get approved overwhelmingly. I did check those numbers and everything, it was very significant.
What do you mean, we brought?
But it did a referendum when we did the initial quarter mil.
Okay.
Because we had not supported at that level previously, and so we did put it out for referendum for the first quarter mil. We could have gone to a half at that time. The Board chose to put the quarter mil on the referendum, and it did pass significantly by the township residents.
Okay, anybody else? Sir? Mr. Binger?
Jim Binger.
You even have to take the mic, Jim. You do, you do. Yeah, you're not special. Oh, you're very special.
If you've been a volunteer for years with the Doylestown Fire Company, and I hear Joe talking about people going out and trying to raise money for themselves and doing a lot of other things, all these volunteer organizations have really changed over the years. You'll see Doylestown isn't doing as much trying to raise money because of all of the stuff that they have to do for training. These people train constantly. They don't have time to go out and try to raise money. And for us in this municipality, for $15 or $18, this is crazy to even be standing here talking about it. We need an ambulance when you call and needs to go to your house, whatever. You need these people, and they need to be able to train. They don't need to be able to, you know, have to go out and raise money.
Anybody else? Okay, thanks, team. We're going to be considering it in our budget discussions. Thank you very much.
Just one last thing. If you do decide to go to referendum this year, it has to be put before the Board of Elections by September 3rd.
Thank you.
This September 3rd.
Thank you. Note that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Ways and Means, Lee.
I think I'd like to start out by saying you ought to have me every month since we'll draw such a big crowd.
Yeah, this is all about you, Lee.
I'm sure it's all about me. I'm here on behalf of the Ways and Means Committee to talk about the six-month performance and our comparison to our budget estimates for 2015. The supervisors all have the information in their pack. There's not a lot of items to talk about tonight, but there are some items that we do need to at least point out. Now, there we go. And despite my new lenses, I think I'll need my glasses for that, so. Oh, there we go. We'll start with line one. Right now, we're holding the revenue forecast for earned income tax study at 3.8. Finance Director says that he is seeing a slight improvement over that, so we may see some additional revenues over that for 2015 when we're done. As you can see, real estate taxes projected to stay the same, same for transfer. Permits and fees are down $78,000, and that's just a function of permits to date, and we're figuring they're going to continue at the same rate. State aid, $12,000 swing isn't a big deal one way or the other, but it's nice that it's a plus. And down to the bottom line, contributions down, I guess Kids Castle contributions are a little lighter than expected. But if you look at the first page there, as far as revenue, it looks like we're going to fall about $103,000 short. I would estimate that we probably would end up making that up in earned income tax, is my guess. So the revenue projection, in my estimate at this point, is going to be about on the money for 2015. The second line is expenses by department, as you can see. The Police Department has been experiencing savings in gasoline, as the rest of us have, and I understand that they're not spending quite as much on training as they had originally projected. The next item, along with line item farther down for professional expenses, are probably the biggest aberration in our budget that we're underestimated for. That could be items related to the built. You can't get used to me with the dark glasses, Barbara, is that the deal?
I'm enjoying the dark glasses.
The professional services are most likely being derived from litigation, zoning issues, and certainly some, let's see, there was one other item in there that's escaped me. If I need it, I'll come back to it. But they're the two items to look at from the standpoint of being overspent per budget. As you can see, the water is slightly, going to be slightly ahead of budget, a $37,000. And there's the other line item for code, $54,000 negative. Fringes, you know, at that size, when you're spending 2.2 to 2.3 million, $28,000, looking at it six months away, is probably a small number. And so there, right now, as it stands, it looks like we will probably spend $266,000 more at this point than what we originally planned. Keep in mind that we think we'll get probably another $120,000 or so in earned income tax, so that gap at this point is not that large. I would suggest that capital, if it comes in right at 2.1 million, which is where we planned it, would be a surprise. We did 1.9 last year. I would, you know, I'll run out on a limb and say we'll probably do about the same this year, so. All things considered, I think expenses will come in about even for the year at this point. This is just a breakdown of expenses in a different way, just looking at it by category instead of by department. You'll see up top, and snow and ice, early in the season, we're over about $110,000. So I guess we're hoping for a nice warm winter this year before we hit January 1st. Medical expense, there's a little additional cost in the direct contribution pension for $28,000. Again, we talked about professional services, that $113,000 lumped together overspent. Then you see some savings coming up. Contracted services are under by 26, insurance costs are better by 20,000, utilities are lower by 13,000, that's a good thing. And then road supplies is about even, you see a little variation there for additional supplies. So again, that just breaks down the expense changes, and again, it all depends on how much we spend in capital is exactly what we get. So now to the bottom line, where all the fund balances go. I guess the point to take away from this evening is that we've planned and expected and intended to spend, if you see under the budget line at the bottom, about $1.9 million out of our funds or savings to cover this year's budget. With the additional costs that we showed previous to this, it looks like we're going to use 2.3, but again, we'll see some improvement there between not spending all the capital expenses and the additional earned income tax. But we are in good shape from the standpoint of having decent fund balances, and again, we will come in the plan somewhere between 1.9 and 2 million is my guess for consumption. And that's the quick read from the six-month report. Any questions?
Any questions from out there?
Can you talk about professional fees?
A question about professional fees?
Professional fees. I would probably need to get to the backup from the line items, and I can certainly provide it to you either after the meeting or some point later, but.
Hammerstein.
Yeah, Hammerstein.
Well, okay, if we're going to call it out by name, there's the zoning issues, Hammerstein issue could be one of them, and there's certainly expenses there. There's engineering expenses from the standpoint of looking at roads and bridges this year as far from what I understand. And there's planning expenses that have been done in anticipation of potentially doing renovations and/or building of new facilities or whatever. So the combination of those, we did not budget for this particular year. It's not a huge, on the top of the total budget, it's not huge, but it is something that we are taking a look at and watching carefully for next year.
So it was intentional spending?
It's intentional spending, it's not careless spending, if that's what you're trying to ask. I know you didn't say that, I'm just saying it is intentional and necessary, it's not something that's out of control.
Any other questions? Thank you, Lee.
Thank you.
I just want to, I mean, I just, I think this is really good, and I think it's, this is really informatively, just even, just a short snapshot, and I think it's important, too, that recognizing because, that not only are we kind of in line with revenue and costs, but it's important to see that, you know, we're not overestimating our expenses either. Because, you know, sometimes it's alarming to come in and say, we were going to spend 2 million, we only spent 500,000.
Right.
You know, so I just think this is a nice picture to show.
Okay, and we are getting a little tighter on it, if you remember, maybe you don't remember, but last year, we originally estimated we'd spend about 2.9 on capital, and we ended up at 1.9.
Well, yeah.
So that's one, I don't see that big a swing this year. I think we'll come very close to hitting the number this year.
Yeah, no, and that's kind of what I was referring to, so I think this is great.
Great, yeah. Thank you.
But even just to the capital, I mean, the Ways and Means Committee and the staff, I mean, you guys are really being able to scrutinize all the line items, a lot more today than what you have been years ago. So being able to go in and see specifically where the dollars are going and what's generating it and how you're spending it, the level of detail is much greater today than you have in the past, so.
Well, that gives me an opening to give hat, tip of the hat to Ken Wallace and Ed Evenbok for continuing to refine the numbers that we get to work with. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lee. Thanks for your work. All right. Any visitors or public comment? Seeing none, hearing none. Okay, we're going to next meet, actually, our Pension Committee will be meeting on Tuesday, September 15th at 4:00. And we're going to change the Board of Supervisors meeting from September, on September 15th, from 7:00 to 5:00. We're going to be closed on September 7th for Labor Day. We're going to have an open house here to tour the building, and tour the building because we're anticipating expansion or new construction. The tour, open house tours are August 27th from 10:00 to 12:00, and Thursday, September 10th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. You are all invited to attend. Give a gift of life, Red Cross Blood Drive is September 11th from 2:00 to 7:00 in this activity center, which is the red building that way. Fido float at Fannie Chapman, that's the first time that the dog park, the community dog park is sponsoring Doylestown Township Park and Rec, is September 12th at Fannie Chapman Pool from 12:30 to 4:00. There's a whole lot of information available on our website, doylstonerec.com. Leaf and Yard Recycling Waste is Township residents only. Drop-off site is the third, drop-off site is every third Saturday of the month from March, March to December from 9:00 to 11:00, and the location is the New Britton Road access to Central Park. On September 19th, CB Cares Educational Foundation and Doylestown Park and Rec are joining in the Global Initiative for Young People Around the World in Performing Arts. That will be at the Amphitheater in Central Park, September 19th, 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. And we're going to need volunteers for the Bridgepoint Park Planting, October 3rd at 9:00 a.m., and that'll go on until noon. And last is the reminder to everyone that Central Bucks Schools are back in session on Monday, August 31st. It's a week early than normal, August 31st, so please drive carefully. Number three on our agenda for tonight is the minutes approval for July 21st. Is there a motion to approve? I'll make a motion to approve. Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Any changes, corrections?
I have just one comment. I just noticed a discrepancy in the meeting minutes. It was a discrepancy between the supervisors meeting, and I'm trying to understand what the right number is in the Park and Rec, where in the supervisory meeting, we talked about $20,000 going to Kids Castle from the golf outing, and the Park and Rec meeting minutes, they talked about $16,000. So I don't know if, was it 16? I think your words were approximately, you were rounding off.
I think we said approximately $20,000.
And in the meeting minutes, it said 20,000 will go, so I just want to make sure it's not.
I said 20,000 was going to go, I don't know what the Park and Rec meeting said.
They said 16.
Well, we'll have to get together and talk about that.
Whatever it is.
But I know, I said it was going to be 20,000 at the last meeting, so I think the minutes are correct on what the Park and Rec minutes say, I have no idea.
Okay.
I just had one comment, I'm not sure if the chief was at that meeting, he's shown here as being at the meeting, and.
Which meeting?
The July 21st.
Chief, you weren't here?
No.
I think the lieutenant was here.
He was here.
So just switch names or.
Thank you for that correction. Your classification, I suspect we'll just have to investigate that one a little bit. Can anybody else with that one correction, all in favor of the minutes?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item is correspondence from, I forgot there, from a resignation from.
Ahmad.
Ahmad.
From our Ways and Means Committee, Mr. Schwartz received it and forwarded it to me from Mr. Abnali, who's been on the Ways and Means. He's taking a new position, and will be moving out of the area. We'll miss him.
Is there a motion to accept the resignation of Ahmad Abnali?
I'll make that motion.
Whoop, second.
And it is certainly going to be missed.
Yes, indeed.
Indeed. Thank you for his service. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, reports from the solicitor.
The item under my agenda is an update on the status of securing easements from the various folks that are necessary in order to complete the Pebble Ridge Sewer Project. By way of background, there were 17 properties, 17 owners, I should say, affected by the need to give easements, although there are different partial numbers, there are 17 owners. To date, we have received six easements. We have received, in various degrees, correspondence requests for meetings, and there have been sightings of another eight residents, and three have simply ignored the correspondence sent on two occasions. So I know we need to proceed with this project, and I prepared for your consideration a condemnation resolution for the folks that did not, have not as yet responded or have not as yet reached agreement with the township. Obviously, those folks that we're in discussion with will continue with those discussions as opposed to filing anything in court, but the other three that have seen not even respond, we may be required to proceed with the condemnation route because they haven't taken the correspondence seriously. So I prepared for your consideration tonight, or if you'd rather talk about it and come back and do it later, it's certainly up to you, but a proposed condemnation resolution that would authorize the filing of the necessary declarations of taking.
Comments, questions from the Board? Will entertain a motion to approve the resignation.
I make a motion if the solicitor go forward with these condemnation resolutions.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
That's all I have for the moment.
Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda, Police Chief.
I have nothing to report at this time.
Junior?
Nothing at this time.
Steph, manager?
I just give a real brief update on the Chem Fab. They have continued to work with the State Health Department, the report is prepared there. They are putting a filtration, looking to put in a filtration, air filtration system into the building. In addition, they are continuing to work with Hugh Noe at the EPA on the water contamination and the plume and finding the plume and the extent of that. They look to be doing a water extraction as they find that plume and get the contaminants out of there. They'll plan on meeting again sometime in November.
Okay, we talk about Chem Fab every few months. It's an area, it's a site on North Broad Street in Doylestown. So it's a borough, but when you have contamination, it doesn't, contamination doesn't observe municipal lines, so we're all affected by it. So thanks for keeping on topic. So, thanks for keeping on topic, Steph.
Can I ask a question about that?
Mm-hmm.
Um, when I, when I read all this literature that Stephanie gave us on this, I, I'm having a, a hard time trying to understand what is reasonable. Reasonable in terms of timing. While this has been going on for some time, and when I talked to Stephanie today about it, you know, they're going to take samples, and it's going to take six months to get the samples back, the results of the samples. So, if this is as, I, I guess I just don't understand is how serious is this, and how fast should we move? Because to, to your point, well, yes, it's in the borough, but the plume could be gone anywhere, and we don't know. So, is there, I'm, I'm asking the rest of the board here, is how fast should we be moving on this, and are we going fast enough? I'd just like to have that discussion.
I mean, I believe the EPA, this is something that they continuously work on daily. Taking samples, getting information, talking to the property owners, they're out there. But in terms of when they'll have results that they can share with the CAG, it's, you know, it's not the Customer Advisory Committee that we have that meets with representatives from the borough and township, that, you know, we do meet every several months, and we get reports and kind of get a status of what's happening, and then I share that with the board. There've been several articles, I know they've, um, the boroughs tried to make sure that our folks in Washington are, try to get them to keep moving and keep it in the forefront, and, um, when there's opportunities and need for funding, that that, you know, comes their way. Um, and they, I have to give the guys from EPA a lot of credit because they really know how to work and deal with the system when there isn't funding from one pot, they move to another, and, and they're able to do the work that needs to be done.
I see your sense everyone's moving as fast as they can move, and doing everything that they can do.
Yeah, I do, I just think it's, it's not going to happen overnight, these things, it just takes time.
And I can appreciate that, but it's not as fast as they can, it's how fast do you want them to move? And, and I don't want to be alarmist on this, but I, I don't understand it well enough, but when I talk about, when I read about TCEs in the groundwater, and X-CROM in the groundwater, and all this stuff, I just think of Erin Brockovich and how bad it became. And maybe it's not that bad, and I don't know. But from this, if the pace they're moving, everybody on the committee's okay with it, then I guess I'm okay with it. But I'm surprised that people are okay with the timing.
Well, the unfortunate thing is that you can't direct the pace of the EPA, other than using your good offices to encourage them to do the best they can.
Right.
Because obviously, the borough and the township do not have the deep pockets to remedy the situation.
Understood, and I, and I appreciate that.
Any other comments about that? Thank you. All right, Steph, you have any other correspondence?
Um, just that Panoni has provided us, they're starting their in-depth inspections into the stream crossings, um, and that, they've provided that, and we're going to be-
Stream crossings, meaning?
The bridges, the small bridges and culverts that we have.
Okay.
And they'll be providing that study, you might remember, they did that a couple of years ago, and again, we're starting that process. Yeah. And then lastly, we've had a-
I'm sorry, before you go on to the next one, I knew I have a question on this. I mean, while this is good, we need to get Panoni moving on this, we have a bunch of other bridges the state needs to inspect, and we need to get them inspected because they're on the two-year cycle, and we need to get those estimates prepared so we have them for the 2016 budget.
Right. Um, I did follow up with Kevin Gross.
Okay.
He's indicated to me that they have completed the state, the township bridges that meet the state requirements, um, and they've completed that, and we, but we don't have those report, all those reports in yet, so we should probably have those.
They should have by October 30th, says one of them.
No, that, that's just the six Panoni bridges.
That's Panoni, so.
We got the balance of the states.
Yeah, the state.
So, they've completed all their inspections?
Yeah, and Chapman doesn't come up again until, like, the end of the year.
Okay.
So, November, for another interim.
Good, thank you.
Good, okay. Any else?
Lastly, is our Fire Marshall, there's a training opportunity, um, from October 19th, he's provided you with the costs to attend that training. My recommendation would be to allow him to attend that training. There's an overnight stay, so that requires your approval.
Is there a motion to approve?
Uh, a motion to approve.
Second, thank you, any questions, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, great. Um, Supervisors, you got anything to chunk?
Yeah, just two brief items. One, this morning Bike and Hike Committee met, 8:00 a.m., thank you for all who came out, um, for continuing to drum, or beat the drum of our big day in the fall, the Trail Awareness Day, September 20th, stay tuned for that. If you didn't participate last year, it was our first annual, and here we go again. But again, September 20th, Trail Awareness Day. After today's meeting, the committee was led by Tyler, uh, Taylor Thompson on, from Heritage Conservancy, on our, what they call their Tuesday at the Trail Hike. And it's to familiarize people with some of the conservancy's properties and their trails, and they've effectively blazed the new trail, although they consider the property still a passive use, meaning not high intense use, which is Harts Woods, adjacent to the section that you know that Ray and the, and the committee do all the bird watching and all along, but Harts Woods is a conservancy property adjacent to that. So, we went on about our hike this morning after the Bike and Hike Committee, really beautiful property, and, um, it's great to know that it's back there. And they look, in the future, Conservancy will be able to give us some other updates, they're going to continue their trail, uh, Tuesday and the Trail hikes and all that, so I think it's a great, great effort, and if you can, participate. In addition, uh, well, Park and Rec, I think there'd be other business, talked about that later regarding the amphitheater and that, so we'll defer to that. So, other than that, nothing, thank you.
Okay, Ken, do you have anything?
Uh, yeah, a couple points. Just to update everybody, is the accountants come in, had come in and did a, a review of the, of the books for 2014, and glad to report, there was only one issue found within the Water Authority books, and two issues found within the township, which were easily resolved and, and cleared up. So, I think for all the work that everybody does, this was a good audit, you know, to find just three different things on all books, sets of books, I thought was a great job. So, congratulations to Ken and the staff to, in preparing for all that hard work. The second item was just to remind everybody, we do have a number of volunteer spots available in various committees, so those that have some time and would like to entertain some of those, go to the website and look at the different openings that are there, and we'd love to have more people join us.
Thank you.
And the last item is, is that to remind everybody, our budget work sessions are going to be coming up, probably September is our first one for 2016, open to the public, so just be aware that they're there, and welcome you to attend and participate as you need to.
Thank you. You got anything now, or?
I do, I have two things. One, attended the Planning Commission meeting, and the main topic was the Pavilion, which we're going to discuss a little bit later tonight. And I also like to comment that, I mean, the duty of a Township Board of Supervisors is to inspect every department under the township's authority. Therefore, for the last nine months, we have reviewed Doylestown Township Municipal Authority, DTMA. The authority has been scrutinized and looked at from every angle. The analysis concluded that the DTMA was a beneficial asset and a beneficial service to our residents. The analysis showed there were opportunities for growth, and with a more aggressive approach, we have already seen significant results. The DTMA should not be sold as the potential for servicing our community is ever increasing, and with the continued creativity and enthusiasm of the authority members, the future of the DTMA is bright.
Okay, any else? Thank you.
Um, just one quick thing regarding, piggybacking off of Ken, the Telecommunications Board, we have two open slots, so anybody interested in, any techies out there, interested in social media, interested in video production, or just interested in getting involved in lending a hand in some of these different types of things, you know, please inquire, we can have someone talk to you about what TAB is all about and what we do there. We're also looking for videos, we're looking for content for our TV station. Those can be educational or informational videos, they can be already produced, or if there's new ones that could be assembled and edited on a pro bono basis, we're working with a group right now called Crabgrass Productions that will be doing some videos for us on a historical nature. And we've got a lot of great content right now, we have great videos that are running, but we want to keep the TV station fresh and exciting, so we're always looking for something new.
Okay, great, thanks. All right, next item on the agenda, unfinished business, the band shelf sponsorship. Um, you've received a memo from Stephanie that outlines, um, John Bray, Chairman of the Park Board, and I met with, um, well, with Covenant Bank folks, Mr. Timmons and Mr. Spear are here, but actually, or, um, we met with him, and Mr. Timmons is actually here. And we come to an agreement that Covenant Bank is going to be our bank, uh, the name on our amphitheater over the next three years, and Thompson Organization is going to be our series, concert series sponsor. So, we have two incredible organizations supporting the, the arts in Doylestown Township, and Covenant Bank actually is here tonight, Mr. Timmons, thank you for being here. And I want to reiterate one of the announcements I made earlier, and that the, the CB Cares and the Doylestown Township Park and Rec Playing for Change event will be held September 19th, 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the Covenant Bank Amphitheater in Central Park. Thank you, Mr. Timmons.
Thank you.
The board should take some official action to recognize the proposal from Covenant Bank and to delineate the naming of the amphitheater for the period involved.
The, the agreement is, and I'll, I'll get approval, and I'll make this motion, the agreement is that Covenant Bank will be the, this name of our amphitheater, beginning this year, September 1st, 2014, uh, 15 through to, well, three years from that, whatever the date is, do the math. And there, the agreement is that they will pay us $41,000 over that three-year period of time, and, uh, they are exclusive.
We're making a motion on this, correct?
I think that's pretty much it.
Okay.
And the, and the, and the agreement is with Covenant Bank, and should a successor entity take over, which we don't anticipate nor does Covenant Bank, then that, that agreement will terminate. That's pretty much it.
And Thompson?
That was, we just had one-
You don't need to do Thompson because there's no official designation on-
Ah, okay.
So, we will see that the amphitheater will have Covenant Bank at the top of the, I mean, beautiful little sign, beautiful big sign, and, and everyone, when everyone comes to the amphitheater in Central Park, they're coming to the Covenant Amphitheater, Covenant Bank Amphitheater.
Okay. Firework, everybody?
Only if Covenant Bank is sponsored, yeah. Mr. Timmons, do you have anything to say?
I do, if you don't mind.
Please.
Um, I have a pretty big mouth, so I don't know if I really need this or not.
Yeah, but you do because you're on-
But I do because you're recording, okay, so is this okay then?
Yes.
So, what I really want to say tonight is, is that, first of all, we really are grateful and thankful that we're actually being the sponsors for this amphitheater. But more importantly, I just wanted to share with everybody here how impressed we were on how you conducted business, because sometimes it's just like an awkward sort of circumstances, and we found ourselves in that, but I appreciated how you were willing to work through the situation in such a way that it was really a win-win-win for everybody, and so I just wanted to say, I appreciate all your efforts.
You're welcome, thank you, thank you very much. We look forward to the relationship. Um, is there a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Very good. In, in fact, the band shelf has generated $71,000.
Yes, with the combined-
That's pretty amazing.
Sponsorship with Covenant and Thompson, we have generated $71,000 for the performing arts.
Excellent, for three years.
For three years, over a three-year period. So, thank you very much.
Excellent.
Okay, um, next item on the agenda, authorization to sell the Showmobile, our old amphitheater.
Um, I put a little memo together, I just need the board's authorization, we would like to sell it. We would probably, we'll start with going through the Township News Magazine. I would like to put a cap that we try to obtain $10,000. There was a '98 wing or Showmobile that recently sold for 15 on governmentdeals.com, so I'm hoping that we'll get a minimum of, since ours is older and rusting, maybe we'll get a little bit less, but at least I-
I've been a good saleswoman on the mic right now.
I know, I know. But we, we, I think we can get at least 15, but I don't want to take less than 10 right now. That's my recommendation to the board. Let's see what we can do and try to sell it.
Is there a motion to approve the sale?
Move to approve.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I guess I should read, I guess I can say, is there a motion to approve the listing of the Showmobile?
Yes, authorization, yeah.
All right, um, next item, CB Cares waiver of fees-
Yes.
For the October 24th Pumpkin Fest.
Mm-hmm.
We did this last year, so anybody need explanation, any discussion?
No.
Will we have a Showmobile?
Yeah, because they can't even get it in until the October issue, so.
We will still have the Showmobile on October 24th. Is there a motion to approve the waiver request?
Uh, uh-
You don't have to speak yet, I mean, we don't have to, I don't hear enough to answer the motion if you want to say something.
I, I just, what did we waive dollar-wise last year? I guess that's where I'm-
You waived everything except the $4 state fee.
What was the amount that we waived last year?
Um, oh, sorry, I should have thought that.
Because our maximum's $1,000.
For the ordinance, correct.
Resolution.
Resolution, mm-hmm, so you-
And I-
But you waived the security deposit and-
Well, waived the security deposit, I, I mean, that's, to me, that's-
Yeah, so that's a $1,000 security deposit right there, which is part of it, and then you waived the other 1,000, and I believe they, um, I know they covered the state fee, and I believe the rest, the whole thing, I mean, it was a little less on the hourly rate of the employees.
I believe it was less than 1,000, otherwise I wouldn't have agreed to it, so this, I will make a motion to approve this waiver at a maximum of $1,000.
And to waive the security deposit.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's-
So, it's-
They're not going to go anywhere with it.
So, it'd be 76450 that they would have-
76450, sold.
All in favor of the motion?
Uh, you second.
All second.
Is there a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. You know who owns the 100th and 11th and 12th. Okay, next item on the agenda, public sewer connection requests.
Um, yes, sorry. We have a request from a resident at 23 Pine Circle, he is experiencing a malfunctioning septic system, and has provided us with the necessary paperwork from the Bucks County Health Department and the Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority for us to submit it to DP, if the board is so inclined to allow him to tie into the public sewer that exists near his home.
Any comments?
Absolutely.
Any questions, is there a motion to approve the request?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Line painting for 2015, we've got a memo here from Dick John, he recommends that we award the bid to traffic and safety signs, an amount of $16,799 for 2015 line painting and marking work. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Awarded to traffic and safety signs, each. All righty then. Land developments, Buckingham Retail Properties have withdrawn their plan.
You want to make a motion to acknowledge receipt of the withdrawal.
Have we gotten it?
Yes.
All right, is there a motion to acknowledge receipt of the withdrawal of the plan?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thanks. That was the 313 and Ferry Road, Wawa application we last considered. Okay, Pavilion at Furlong.
Next item, I think, has been around for more than a couple of months.
Next item, I think, has been around for more than a couple of months.
700 years.
And we let, the Board of Supervisors last saw the applicant, I think, in May.
May 5th.
And they made a presentation, solicited public comment, and the board had comments. And since then, they have been working on the plans and appeared at your planning commission, I believe, early this month, was it last?
Last month.
Last month, and you have the minutes of the planning commission within the contents of your packet. They're here to make a presentation to the board and to members of the public. Mr. Murphy?
Good evening. As Jeff said, we were last here three and a half months ago, and there were multiple comments made from board members in the audience about different elements of the plan. And since that time, we've revised it, refined it, and re-presented it both to the staff and to the public. We've received in the normal course the review comments from your traffic folks, from your planners, and from Mario. And last month, we did present it to the planning commission, and the planning commission did ultimately, after further conversation, did recommend moving this plan forward to the board with support to see that it finally gets implemented. I'm happy to go through each individual revision that we've made. I think most of the people in the room already know, as I know Rick and Ken certainly do, but in terms of the big picture of what we did, we've reduced the overall square footage on the site by 3,500 square feet. That was principally accomplished in two buildings. Retail building B, there, was reduced in length by 50 feet so that we could preserve the tree that was the subject of a lot of discussion back in May. So that was a 2,500 square foot reduction. And retail building A, I think in the back, right there, was, the depth of that was reduced so that the distance between the residential neighborhood and the rear of those building, that building would be greater. We've also taken a more critical look at internal sidewalks, cartway widths, et cetera, and made them more consistent and certain places more narrow. We've also, with the support of bike and hike, reduced the width of the bike and hike from 12 feet to eight feet along York Road and eliminated it entirely along Swamp Road, the feeling being that it was unsafe to have folks walking in that location. The net result of the different tweaks in terms of building coverage and impervious is, as compared to the plan we showed you in May, which was a little bit north of 50.5%. This plan that we presented to the planning commission is 45.2%, so we reduced the overall impervious by five and a half percent. Correspondingly to that, the amount of tree preservation has gone up by 4%. It was 23, now it's 27. And some of the other relevant numbers have improved, not dramatically, but somewhat as well. So I think those are the biggest modifications we've added, some additional buffering that didn't exist previously along the rear of retail building B and the industrial properties to the west. And I guess the other, from a utility standpoint, we've had a number of conversations with your authority about water. And I think the current feeling among your staff is that the well, once developed, would ultimately be dedicated to the township so that it would be merged or incorporated into the township system as opposed to being privately owned and maintained. So at least that, I think, is the current thinking, but obviously, no formal decision's been made, but we've had some brief conversations with staff, and I spoke to Rich McGee earlier this week about that as well, so.
Where's the well on site?
Scott, you want to point right, right, up there. There haven't been any other further changes to the either external or internal traffic patterns that we presented to the board in May, other than we can, we finally, and I think with support of everyone, narrowed the width of the access road from Rogers Road that takes you out to the signalized intersection on York. Before it was wider, now it's, it's a 16-feet width in order so that no one has any thought about the fact that it could potentially be a two-way access point. And everyone felt that it was unnecessary impervious to keep it wider than that, because the intention, at least to date, or the direction to date, has been to create a line, but single point of entrance-only access on Rogers to reach the signalized intersection. So those are the principal changes that we've made to the plan and upon which the planning commission made their recommendation.
I note that the name has changed from the discussion at the last meeting.
Right.
Is that a commitment?
That is, right.
The name Pavilion at Furlong?
Right.
That's the new name?
Right.
Why? Why did you change it?
Because the residents thought that was more appropriate to acknowledge where the site was located as opposed to Doylestown.
That was a subject of public comment at the last time we met.
I think we had agreed the last time, but the plan hadn't been changed to reflect it, but.
So exiting Temple Judea, there's a 16-foot cart path or road path through that road, private road, one-way road through?
Right.
The complex to the light, is that the point of that?
Correct, yep. Right. And obviously, that's been a subject of a lot of conversation.
Yes, yes.
Throughout the years that this plan has been, in various forms or another, presented to you. Yep.
Okay, comments, thoughts?
How committed are you to turning that well over to the authority?
We are.
You are committed to doing it?
Yes.
Okay. Regarding impervious surface, you know, we, there's been some tweaks, as you identified, to go from the parking spaces from 10 by 20 to 9 by 18, narrowing the pass. If, if you were to follow the ordinances of what we have as to what they should be, your tweaks took you down to 45.2.
Mhm.
If you hadn't tweaked it, if you followed everything, kept everything the way it's supposed to be, what would, what would that percentage be?
I think it would be approximating 55%.
55.
I mean, it would be, I think, not reducing the parking stall size alone, I think, was going to increase it by 2 or 3%. So, and I, and I'm glad you pointed that out. There was conversation at the planning commission about reducing the parking stall size from 10 by 20 to 9 by 18. There was some sentiment among planning commission members that that was not a good idea.
Right.
George particularly, I think, said that he thought it should stay at 10 by 20. I don't, I don't know that that was a majority view, but it was one he expressed, and that was part of the resolution, but.
So if you were to make them 10 by 20 and do everything by code?
You'd be closer to?
Well, is there any other way to get down to 40?
To get to 40, no, we will never get to 40.
Short of removing buildings and?
Yeah, no.
Well, okay, let's.
No, no, we will never do that.
You would never do what?
No, we will never get to 40. We're at 45 with the plans we're saying. If you'd like us to go lower, I don't think that's realistic to expect this applicant to do that. I think we're at the point where we think this represents the best balance between developing something.
Okay, so just help me understand why that's unreasonable.
Because we don't think that it's commercially viable to do less than what we're showing on the plan.
I don't know what that means.
It means that we're not prepared to reduce the overall square footage below 58,000 on the site. To do, to get down to 40, you would have to continually reduce the square footage of buildings and reduce corresponding impervious, et cetera, with that.
Right.
And this applicant isn't prepared to go any further than what this plan shows.
Other questions or comments?
I've got some more.
I thought you were done, I'm sorry.
No, 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 that's all right, no.
I thought you were done.
I was ready to bang in on the desk.
I yield my time to Mr. Snyder.
At the planning commission, there was a public comment about a quarry, a landfill nearby. Have you done any investigation to know if that is an issue, not an issue? How do we take that topic off the table, that it'll never have any impact here, or?
I have done none, and we haven't done any yet. I did have a lengthy conversation after the planning commission meeting with Tom Kelso, who said he had done extensive investigation and was fully familiar with that, and he did not think that was an issue of concern. But I have, we have not done anything at our side to do that.
He said the same thing to me, I was a witness.
Is that documented anywhere? I mean, I.
Tom said he had documents, I'm not privy to them, Ken, but.
Probably Buckingham's documents, we would have to request them through Buckingham. But he, he said the same thing, that it was downgrading, he didn't think it would be an impact, and that we would have to kind of ask Buckingham.
Okay, I would like to see some documentation on that.
If you drill the well and the water's contaminated, are you then going to continue to deliver that to your customers?
Continue to do what?
Are you going to deliver that to your customers?
Of course not.
Okay.
We still have the parking in the front and on the side, so you're still proceeding with that, there's no?
Right. Again, you're right, Ken, we had, we've reduced, but not eliminated, the scope and extent of the variances that we required, and one of those remains to permit parking in the front yard in front of the buildings that Scott will highlight for me, right there. And again, as we said at the planning commission, we tried to reach a balance between putting all the parking in the back closer to the residential properties and putting them in the front next to 263. And our choice was to do it this way.
The sidewalk along 263, or whatever, what are we calling it?
It's an eight-foot bike and hike path, yep.
Is it, is it, how close is that to the, it looks pretty close, how close is it to the roadway? I mean, what's the setback of the bike path from the roadway?
At the closest point, it's about 10 feet.
Oh, okay.
We do show a fence along there, unusually determined.
What type of fence?
Right, that was a part, a bike and hike recommendation from months ago.
Yeah.
That there be a fence and plantings between the edge of the right-of-way 263 and the wall.
Yeah, because you said 313's not safe, but I don't know if 263 is any safer. Right.
Yep.
Okay, so, and then where, where's it supposed to be going, the bike and hike along that, 263 to wherever it gets next connected to?
Yep, stops right there at the edge of the industrial building there, yep.
Oh, we've got to think long range. Eventually, they will connect to.
We're pushing it as far as we're allowed to.
Well, that's why it was initially intended to go along 313.
I don't know if that's, if that's not connected to anything either, is it?
There is sidewalk on the 313 side, on the Buckingham side, there is sidewalk along there. I noticed it yesterday.
Yeah, that's.
But the gap comes up, no, you cross over on the other side, where Mr. Murphy's standing, on the top side there, coming down, and, yeah, along there, and then there's a big neighborhood.
That's 313?
Yep.
So people from that neighborhood could drop to this location.
I see, I see, they could cross there.
Yeah, they could cross there, and then there is bike path along the Temple property.
Okay. So would that path would then connect to the Rogers Road Temple property?
Eventually, I mean, they could go through the development and connect in across the street, but we would need, the bike and hike committee would need to look at something, or if another property comes in, to bring it down to the intersection.
Potentially.
Potentially, yeah.
All right, don't like things to go nowhere. All right, anybody else have any questions of the?
Just one other question on the tree removal. I said you're at 73% versus the allowed 55%.
Right, I think we went from 23 to 27 preserved, right.
Yeah, I just said it the other way. So there's no other way to manage that differently, get closer to what you're allowed?
The only other way would be to push the development back towards, because there's a significant portion of water that runs up in this area, so.
So that's your trade-off?
Yeah, we could push it back, we've had that conversation a while back, but again, we think that's not a wise thing to do, to try to respect the residential properties to the north there.
Anyone else? Any comments or questions from Mr. O'Malley?
Joe O'Malley, Rogers Road, this is a point of information from me and everyone else. What is being asked of you to do tonight?
I think what they want, Mr. O'Malley, is to hear from the board whether they, this sketch plan represents something that this might be acceptable to the board ultimately and with a, going forward with the land development plan, is that correct?
Yeah, I think ultimately, I'd like, I think both Mr. Garten and I need direction from this board as to develop the stipulation to resolve the outstanding litigation that preceded this by a couple of years ago, so, yes.
Okay, and then, if you give approval, where do we go from, from there?
They would go through the land development process.
If I can, let me sort of lay it out a little bit. There won't be any approval tonight because it's a sketch plan, no official approval. When the board finishes hearing comments from the public and they discuss it amongst themselves, they will decide whether this plan makes sense. And if they conclude that it does, then Mr. Murphy's asking if the zoning and certain of the subdivision elements of this could be reduced to a stipulation or agreement between the township and the developer to be submitted to the judge as a court order to approve the general parameters of this development. And then it'll proceed to land development for all the stormwater issues and all the other issues that are traditionally a part of a land development application.
So that they would have to go back to zoning?
Well, there's two alternatives, either go back to the zoning hearing board or resolve it by a stipulation, which can be done, which is an agreement that's reduced to a court order.
Because if they're not in accordance with the impervious surface, would it not be logical to go back to zoning?
It may be, it may be, but it may be also that the zoning finds, that the zoning hearing board finds it is, you know, they've done as best they can, and the offense of 5% on the impervious is de minimis. I mean, that could be the result, who knows? So if, if we can negotiate or come to an agreement that is a greater good for, for the community as opposed to, you know, arguing about, you know, zoning hearing decision or not, I mean, it's all part of the package, you know what I mean?
Trust me, this is not for the greater good of the community, you know?
I, I don't, you know, don't take my words out of context. I would say, overall, that, you know, a decision, you know, an agreement is sometimes better than a decision, that it may not be as good as an agreement that you can come to.
Okay, another request. When the developer meets with your staff, and they do, and they do this all the time, and I've asked this before, I think it's a good idea that residents are involved in that process, principally because they come here after talking to staff, meeting after meeting after meeting, and then they come and they make this presentation, okay? And we as residents are supposed to sit back, try to absorb, listen, and make comments, and it's almost impossible. You walk out the door and you say, oh, I should have said that, or I should have asked this, or whatever. You have us over the barrel.
I don't know, Mr. O'Malley, I haven't been part of any staff conversations, but I know this thing has been before the planning commission, I don't know, hundreds of times already, so I don't know what staff involvement there's been, but I know that there's been public conversations with the planning commission for, for years.
And I believe Mr. O'Malley has been at those planning commission meetings, so he's familiar with.
Yes, but do they not come, come here with the plan and, and discuss it with the traffic engineer, with water and sewer, with?
Mario.
The engineer?
Yeah, because they're trying to respond to their, and a lot, you've been in and you've looked through the files.
Well, that's why I'm asking, why can't we be part of that process?
Because we're in a matter of litigation, we're reviewing and focused on what the, say, for example, the township engineer's review letter is. They want to find out and work with him, or the township planning consultant's review letter, and address the issues that are raised in there and see, you know, if we do this or we do that, are we meeting the, you know, the response of what your letter is? You know, a lot of the residents have come in, they've seen those letters in the file, and the applicant is trying to address those issues and making sure they understand, well, Maria, what did you mean by your comment, you know, on page seven? You know, what, Judy, what did you mean by your comment here? How can we do that? You know, if we show it to you this way, do, you know, will you go out on the field with us, can we count trees, whatever the situation is? That's what we do with when we meet with staff and we hear their proposals. We alert them to things like, new applicants, when they come in and need to give, bounce an idea off us, you know, I just bought this property, I want to do X, Y, and Z there, we tell them zoning allows this, it doesn't allow that, there's a group of residents, you should reach out to them, you know, on a new application, you know, we're through this, we're in litigation, you know, they're trying to work through the issues, remind them, this is the requirements in zoning, this is the requirements for engineering, and that's what we discuss with them.
Okay. Last time around was a perfect example. When we were here in May 5th, there were a lot of comments, suggested revisions. We spent two or three weeks, made some revisions. I reached out to Steph and asked if we could meet with the staff, brought the sketch plan in before we made a formal resubmission of it. Staff made comments, why don't you look at that, look at this, we don't understand this, that. So we took that back and then made a formal resubmission of the plan, got the review letters in the typical course, and then met with the planning commission last month. So that's the way we typically do it, so there's, it was, everything was transparent, always is, but.
I don't, I don't.
That's the way it is.
No insult, I don't, I'm not buying it, you know? Are there deals being made behind closed doors?
We have no.
Hey, listen, you're government, okay? Look at the polls, do people trust government? Oh, well, and just one last.
But the township staff has no, have no, we make, we make recommendations, but ultimately, it's the planning commission who makes, is an advisory board makes recommendations, and ultimately, the board of supervisors who makes the decision on the plans. We have no say in whether it gets approved or denied. We have no say in whether it gets approved or denied as, as any plan goes through the process.
Okay. So, I'm just curious about this, because it's an interesting point. So when they resubmit a plan that they want to come in and review with staff and the engineers before they resubmit one, can we not extend that to residents to come and say, hey, we're going to be looking at this again?
How are you going to extend that in the meeting?
Well, that's a different issue. It's a different issue, I just, I just don't know.
I mean, it would be better for you.
Joe's saying, I want to be part of the process.
Yeah, I think what would be better is if the applicant were willing to do that, is for the residents to hold a meeting where the applicant would go over the review letters with them and discuss concerns and things like that. I think we're focused, when we meet, we're focused, and we spend maybe 10, 15 minutes with an applicant when they're in.
Right.
So it's not a lot of time, we focus on what the review letter is and what we're trying to, you know, tell the applicant, these are your issues, go fix it. You know, I think it makes it, it's, would be difficult to have, you know, 30 residents sitting there as well. That's a public.
I agree with you, it'd be difficult, and that to me is the challenge, is how, how would we communicate it? So, and how do we get you here tomorrow at 2:00 and notify you and get it? But I'm just saying, because we.
I'm available 24/7.
But I think it is better for you and a group of residents to meet with an applicant, or any group of residents to meet with an applicant. I mean, I know Savet has done it a number of times when he's done residential development. He's met with a group of residents, I think, you know, if the applicant's willing to do that, that's really, should be a separate meeting with the residents, and that they can tell us what, you know, and try to share what it is, and so that it gets to a point where, you know, I mean, it would be great if everyone could dot their i's and cross their t's from day one, you know, we would, all plans would move quickly through a process, but that doesn't happen.
Okay, one, one last comment. My worry, and I'll always worry, is traffic. The driveway coming out of, out of the project, making a right-hand turn onto York Road, going south, okay? I know many, many people are going to just whip around and come right down Rogers Road. It's inevitable, and I don't know how you're going to be able to, to stop that or, or whatever, I don't know. But I just remember at the Wawa meetings and that traffic engineer standing up here and you all laughed at her and said, if you approve this, we'll come back in six months and review the traffic situation. You approve this project and the traffic does whip around, the damage is done, we're stuck with the traffic no matter what, and it becomes a safety issue. So just keep that in the back of your mind. Thank you.
Thank you, anybody else? Please take the, the mic, Mr. Bingler.
Barb, I think when you said it's only 5%, I don't think you were quite listening to the 56 or 7% if they don't get all of the variances that they're asking for every week.
Did I say only 5%?
I believe that you did. It's only 5%.
Well, all right, don't, please don't take my comments out, my comments out of context, that's all I'm saying.
Okay, yeah.
I'm looking at the bigger picture here, it may or may not happen, all I'm saying is that that would be the process. Do you look, you see what the, what the request is, where the shortfall is, and what the bigger picture is? That's, that's all I'm saying. So whether it's 5% or 50%, or 1%.
I mean, I.
So, I mean, I don't, continue.
This doesn't really have anything to do with the Grosso Group as much as, I think we're leaving ourselves open to something here. I've read in the paper with every one of you supervisors saying how we have to uphold our ordinances and whatever with the Hammerstein, you know, too much impervious surface, whatever, up at the Wawa, all the way along the line, and now, when this Grosso Group bought this property, they knew that there was a 40% impervious surface ratio, okay? Now they're asking really 57% impervious surface. That is not upholding our rules and regulations. And I believe that if they want to do something, they should have come in, okay, asked to change the zoning, went to a C4 which had a 50% impervious surface, and then they'd still be 7% over. It doesn't, you know, and then we go from our small, you know, commercial to large commercial going to your C4. I mean, I just don't see that, saying that 17% or 17 isn't a little bit.
What Mr. Bingler is saying is that it's five, only if they got relief from all of the parking stalls size and whatever. If they build it according to the requirements, it'd be at 17.
Okay, okay.
Interesting, I don't know what you're trying to say.
Yes, 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 yes.
And I don't believe that that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
I believe they bought this property with a, you know, specific 40% impervious and whatever.
Anybody else? Come here.
I have a list.
Mary Struzniewski.
Mary Lou Struzniewski, I live on Brook Drive, which is off Rogers Road. When I came in tonight, I was looking at the charts on the bottom of the plan with the ratios of the various trees, but I also noticed that it was dated 2010. I'm no arborist, but it seems to me that trees grow quite a lot in five years.
We've been through that issue over and over and over and over again. Judy Stern Goldstein's office has already been out, met with our engineers, we have established the benchmark for when the tree should be measured, I think that's been publicly discussed many times, but.
So are they going to be measured again?
They're going to be measured based on the recommendation of the township planner for whatever that operative date is, and I think we all know that.
And you don't know that?
I don't know the date, but I know that that issue has been raised before and that we're following the direction of the township planner.
Ed, I think you need to clarify that that was done under the plan that was submitted, that's the question of an appeal, so that's where those numbers, that's what that's based on, I think, if you could maybe clarify that, that might be helpful.
Okay, that's true, I mean.
Do you have any, do you have a list, you have them?
Yeah.
Do you want to continue?
Also on the, well, the issue of the well came up. Has there been anything worked out to test whether or not that well will affect adjacent residential properties?
Again, that issue was raised at some of the most recent meetings, and I think we all understand that there is a well disturbance requirement, agreement requirement that the township will impose. Baseline studies would have to be done, and to the extent that well would have a direct impact on any of the adjacent wells, it would be the obligation of the applicant to make that situation correct. So, that's been discussed.
And I guess nothing's changed about the proximity of the sewage treatment to the.
Has not, correct.
To the daycare center?
Has not.
How far away is that, in feet?
I don't know, Scott, you know, I can't.
To the building, it's about 75 to 100 feet.
And is, is there a play area in that area?
Yeah, there's a play area, a surface play area.
So the children would be having.
I mean, that's just an idea of where we're going with the full standard, that's a mid design, but the corner where we're showing it is probably about 75, 80, I didn't say.
Okay, so the kids would be playing 40 feet from the sewage treatment. Okay, one of the things, I've lived on Brook Drive for 50 years. There has been a speeding problem on Brook Drive for 50 years. The difference is that in those days, a couple cars, maybe not even one every day, would speed down the road. That has obviously changed. We have a lot of cars speeding down Rogers Road, and no matter how we try to look at it, when this development appears, traffic is going to increase on Rogers Road. It is also going to be exacerbated by what's going on at Poole's Corner. People are going to need not to go down through that intersection, they're going to be looking for shortcuts, and the best shortcut is Rogers Road. So, I have two questions about that. Is there any plan for not having a left turn into this development from Rogers Road? Which would discourage people, I mean, there are several other.
Do you mean that driveway that?
The driveway that goes across from the temple to the development, that there would be no left turn, there's no right turn, there's no left turn out of the temple, which people tell me is basically ignored, but, yeah. So if you, which would discourage people from coming down Rogers Road to get into this. Has there been any thought?
Talking about the location.
Right.
No, the plans show that left turns can be made in, that's your question.
Yeah, there's no plans to not show it.
The plan shows that there's left turns into that driveway.
Right.
For residents in your neighborhood to go in to this development.
Right.
Correct.
Well, speaking only for myself, I'd be perfectly happy to give up that convenience for a reduction in traffic.
So no left turn into the, into that project?
I don't want that in.
Yeah, no left turn, yeah.
Well, then you'd have to do something with the temple folks who can't make a left hand turn out of there.
They can go straight across.
They can go straight across.
But they can't, they could take away that, through, through.
No.
No, no, the through would be there.
Doesn't have anything to do with what the temple's doing.
But can it, left where?
If you're coming on Rogers to the intersection at 263, you can't make the left into it. The temple would still be able to come across straight.
Yeah, wouldn't have anything to do with the temple. And an additional problem on Rogers Road, and I don't know if Mr. Garten can explain this, or somebody can explain it. All of us go throughout Doylestown all the time, and we see that one of the ways in which Doylestown solves the problem of people speeding is to use speed bumps. One of the ones, you can drive down Oakland Avenue and you might really, if you weren't familiar with the area, you might really wonder, what on earth are these three speed bumps doing right above the railroad station? Well, they're there because the kids from West come down there after school, and it serves as a deterrent for them for speeding. There are all kinds of places in Doylestown where speeding could be a problem, but there are speed bumps. The population on Brook Drive and San Sam Circle has changed in the past year. We now have 18 kids who are back and forth across that intersection, and I've spoken to some of the parents who are very concerned about that. A speed bump there might save some lives, and I don't understand why we don't have speed bumps. I don't know, who can tell me why we don't use speed bumps in Doylestown Township?
I don't think we're going to answer my question tonight, but.
Yeah, I mean, that's something for the traffic committee more than welcome to come, that doesn't have anything to do with development.
I mean, is it illegal?
It was part of Rogers Road plan, you know?
The synagogue was supposed to do a traffic calming, I don't know if it's been done yet or not.
They're tying, they haven't done it yet because they're tying it with this.
It's all part of the.
But that's all something that can be done, there's no prohibition because New Britton Borough does the same thing, and there are other places that do, so it's something that can certainly be considered, there's no, there's no prohibition to it.
To using speed bumps.
Right.
Or other traffic calming measures, there are other measures besides speed bumps.
And one traffic calming measure on Rogers Road was already, right? You reduce, we reduce the speed from 35 to 25.
Yeah, I would, I would welcome you to come to one of our traffic advisory meetings, and you can really, they can kind of show you everything that we're doing to reduce.
I'm just wondering where the board's authority is in.
Well, we take, we take the recommendation from our traffic committee, who works very hard to, you know, maintain traffic calming measures on, in all these places.
The township cannot put a traffic calming measure on a state road, but it has authority on a township road if it conducts the appropriate studies and so forth.
Yeah, and as far as I understand it, Rogers Road in the township plan is listed as not appropriate for through traffic. So I'm wondering, you know, are we adhering to the township plan? Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? I'm sorry, Mr. O'Malley, there's a gentleman behind you that had his hand up.
Thank you. Keith Peters on Siegel Chase Drive. Question about the hydraulic use, or hydrologic use of the well on the property there, for this applicant or anybody else. Wasn't there a pollution plume over on Edison-Furlong Road, and isn't intensive use of the well going to move that plume in that direction, sort of leading to other questions that were here about the wells?
I don't think anybody here is a geologist or hydrologist, Keith, but I'm sure it's going to be taken into consideration when they drill that well or drill a well 100 yards from it, I mean, that obvious, they're not going to deliver water that's not.
There's a plume in Furlong, or there was, there's discussion.
In Furlong, I don't know if it's Edison-Furlong Road, but.
It's there.
Period.
Right, and that was.
My question had to do with the intensive use of that well by this applicant or any other applicant for that property, drawing that plume in that direction and affecting, possibly affecting not only their own well, but other residents' wells around them.
That's an appropriate comment and should need to be addressed.
Thank you.
I think we discussed this at the last Board of Supervisors meeting, that what liability does the developer have if the well does end up being contaminated? And I believe you said that they would have to float a bond or, or something.
It's limited credit to guarantee the integrity of residential wells in the vicinity.
Okay, is the time.
For a given period, the period usually begins a number of years after the project is completed and fully occupied.
Okay, what is that time limit?
Well, I've seen five or 10 years.
So that, that's negotiable?
It certainly is.
Considering what's in the area? Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Sir, please identify yourself for the record.
I'm Herb Elsner, Sr. I have a business on Rogers Road across from the temple. I just want to ask some questions, this is my second meeting and I don't know all the answers here. When the traffic goes out onto Rogers Road, they're going to make what turn, a left or a right turn?
They're not going to come out.
Out to.
Not coming out to Rogers Road from the shopping center.
Or entrance.
It's one-way in.
Oh, that's an in-road?
Yes.
Okay.
No way.
Okay, so they would come from.
They come from either way.
Either way. Oh, either way. Okay, the other question I have is, are there going to be any traffic lanes added on 263?
At Rogers Road?
Anywhere along the entrances.
Yes.
The main entrance.
Okay, I just wanted to figure it out, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments?
Hi, Ann Woodbury, I'm at 680 Spring Valley Road. This project's a mile away from me, so my main concern, other than hopeful, hopefully that the board upholds the laws that are on the books, is traffic. They're proposing a daycare center, this is not 20 kids, this is 250 kids in a two-story building. That means all those kids have to be delivered and picked up, and it's right off Rogers Road. That's where people are going to figure that out really fast, that they can cut through that way and go in and out, or go in, I should say, to drop off and pick up their kids. It's a huge volume of traffic that's not there now. Add that to the retail and the urgent care and everything else that they propose, and that's quite a lot of traffic. This is a small road, yes, you did reduce the speed, that's great, but I know, Barbara, when you came to ask for my vote, I talked to you about people cutting through already on Rogers Road and what a problem that is. The traffic's tremendous already. They have a right to develop this property, I totally understand that, but they also need to respect whatever the zoning laws are on the books, and they also need to think ahead that this small road, Rogers Road, is not really a viable throughway for people bringing their children to a daycare center every single day and picking them up every single day. The temple's been a good neighbor as far as I know. The main exit from the temple does not align with this property, you know, it's the one that's farther away from the building that they're proposing. I think that we're trying to solve a problem that doesn't exist by trying to get the temple people to go across a public road and go out through a private parking lot to get to a traffic signal. I don't, I think we're trying to solve a problem that isn't. If you eliminate that and don't allow people to come any other way but from York Road down to that pork chop it, so they can only come in, make a right into the daycare, that would eliminate a lot of that traffic from Rogers Road. So it's just something to think about.
Let me, let me just clarify what you're saying. You, you would have had that one-way in only off Rogers Road eliminated.
You, you would have had that one-way-in-only off Rogers Road eliminated?
I would either that or ask that it only be entered from York Road. You can do it as a pork chop, if they can't make...
A right turn in only.
Correct.
So it's, he's saying that limit either get rid of it altogether or turn right on Rogers, you can only turn right down there?
Correct. So that all those people taking their little ones in and out are not traveling up and down Rogers Road. That would help a lot. Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Look...
All I remember is that when we went through months and months and conversations and conversations with the temple, they're not allowed to make a left-hand turn out of the temple, so access and safety on, for the temple congregants was to have ability to go through that...
Right. That's what we've been...
To the complex to get to the light.
That's what we were always told from the very beginning of the design of this plan, was that we needed to provide for that movement exactly. So if you keep it, that's fine. If you want to eliminate it, that's fine. It's your call, but I thought it was designed to assist the temple congregants.
You're absolutely right, that's exactly what it's for.
Yeah.
Can I just ask a question here? Just, I'm just, just, I mean, I think the residents raise a good point, you know. Why do we keep getting presented a plan that's doesn't, isn't within our variances? Like, I mean, is, is there a way we can say, come back to us with a plan that meets the requirements? And we go from there. But to say my, the, the owner of the land is not, it's not viable for the owner of the land, but if the owner of the land bought the property knowing what the regulations were, well, I mean, why is it on us to now make a decision to make, you know, justifications for him? I just, I, I, I think this is a round robin. I mean, I've been on this board for three years, and when I came on the board, it was like, the Grasso property, we got to get you spun up on that. I mean, I, I'm getting, I'm getting aggravated at this point, that we have to keep going back and forth. I, I speak for myself, but I believe that in order for this plan to be presented, the plan should meet the requirements and stop asking for variances. We do this with other people. Well, I'm just, it's just, I mean, we, we're creating this domino effect with, with not just this property itself, but all of them. Like, why keep coming to us? You know, last week, or last month, it was Wawa. This, you know, this month, it's you again. But, I mean, I, what's the point of having our codes in place if every time we get a plan presented, they're asking for variances? And I don't know who that was too, it was just in general, but I've just, you know, it's 8:30, and we're hearing the same questions, we're hearing the same arguments, we're hearing the same feedback, month after month after month, so...
Mr. O'Malley, what's the impact on the impervious surface if you eliminate that road off of Rogers Road? Do you know?
You would reduce it a little bit further. It's not going to be a huge deduction, maybe a percent or so, it's not a big number. And to answer your question, this plan predates me by many, many years.
I know, yeah.
And I think part of the issue is, some of the conforming plans are unattractive, at least undesirable, if you will, to the surrounding property owners, because part of the site's zoned industrial, part of it's zoned commercial. And long before I got here, there were multiple plans submitted that involved industrial development in the rear that a lot of people felt objectionable. So over time, again, predates me, this plan has been developed, it's been tweaked for years, just like you said, and again, I think the answer to the question is, this plan, in our view, and at least now in the planning commission's view, represents the best balance between a more conforming but undesirable plan and this plan that provides more benefit and protection to the property owners that residentially reside.
And I agree with you.
So that's what it is.
It can't be, you know, the residents understand whether they came in before or after this property is bought, that this was zoned a certain way.
Right.
So I'm not going to be in defense of residents who bought in, if it's industrial, and somebody comes with a plan, an industrial plan that meets all the regulations, well, that's the reality of it. But, you know, it's hard to, to back up a plan, and, and I, and I have to side and err with the side of residents when, again, they, when you move in somewhere and you see what's around you and what's surrounding you, and, and what you're getting yourself into as a property owner, this, that's what they expected, right? They expected, okay, these, this is what can happen with this property that's next to us.
Yeah, and then we come back with a plan, and they're not going to like it, and then we're going to be back having the same conversation again.
Yeah, but, but there's a big difference if you come back with a plan that meets what the C4 regulations are, then that's when I have to turn, or C1, that's when I have to turn to the residents and say, unfortunately, this fits within the zoning requirements.
Okay.
You know?
Okay, it's fine.
I mean, and I'm speaking for myself, but...
You see, have a hand up out there. Jim.
Jim, and then Lee.
And I have said this all along, I stood up in defense of the Grasso tract before the zoning hearing board many, many moons ago. How long was that, Stephanie? When, when the township took them to the zoning hearing board?
Ten years.
They agreed, you know, when we sat down and had all kinds of negotiations, that there was only, I think, 13% left in the back. All the rest of it was out front, which everybody wanted, whatever. The township took them to court because of the parking in the front yard, the CVS, it was 13,000 square feet, I can, I can go on and on, okay? I know something's going to happen there, and I, and I know you're going to go over, you know, with some things. And as the residents who live down in the, down in the valley and whatever, I truly believe that they need to be able to go out to a road. And if you come up with something that is close to the 40 impervious surface, figure out how much is in that road, and give them the allowance for the road because they're doing something for the community, and it shouldn't count against them. And I would have said that to anybody if, if these people would have tried to sit down and talk to us, but nobody's ever tried to talk to us. So the old group did.
Lee, you had something?
I have a question.
Okay. Regardless of what we do, we cannot move that law, take that road away unless the temple is in our... All right, other comments?
Say that again.
That, that one-way road into it off, into the complex off Rogers Road, has, that conversation has to happen with the temple.
I would have to agree with that. You take that roadway away, you got every single potential congregant exiting on the Rogers Road on New York Road without a traffic signal. That's...
That was part of the deal when the, when that was approved.
Recognize that was part of the deal, but they do that today.
They do?
Okay.
With the, the long-term solution was to be able to get through here. And I'm not so sure that the temple congregation construction would have gone through without the requirement of a traffic signal at Rogers Road and York Road.
Exactly right.
They held off on that with the potential one being down here. It's got to be one or the other.
I think we need to table this discussion, and I'll seek a motion on that, because I do believe if we're going to go any further with this discussion and that roadway, we need to have the temple brought in on the conversation.
Motion to what? Table. Table, let it in.
Second.
Okay, just so...
There's a man in the back with a hand up.
Sorry, Ed.
I'm Mr. O'Malley.
I know you wanted some direction here. Um, Mr., you have to take the mic, sir, I'm sorry.
I just have a quick question.
I know. Mr. Hurley.
Yeah, I live off of Spring Valley, Remy. When will you take public, when will the board take public? When will you hear from the public?
We just did.
This is it?
Well, tonight, because she asked for public comment, and that's why Mr. O'Malley got up, Mr. Bingler, and everybody else.
This is not the last conversation.
Not the best time of the year for...
Well, it's not, nothing's going to happen tonight anyway, so it could be a further opportunity.
Right. The, the traffic problems in our community are, are already tough. You can't get out of, you can't get off of Spring Valley onto 313 between 8:00 and, and 9:30, and you can't do it between 4:00 and 5:30 at night. We don't need any more traffic for, for another chain drugstore, to be surrounded by them. There's, there's no benefit to the community in the retail site here. I can't comment on the rest of it, and most of the folks that live in my area feel the same way.
All right.
My, my comment on the tabling is, and I think Scott may be answering it better, I think there's some confusion about that access way up to the daycare center. That's a short run, and it's only X amount of feet wide. I don't think that's going to reduce impervious by anywhere near what was suggested, a few percentages. Am I wrong?
No, I think that... You would eliminate it from here. You'd eliminate it from here down to there. There's no reason to have it pass this. If there's going to be access to the...
Issues about that too. Impervious surface, that's right, yeah.
All right. We're going to have to move this, move this...
Motion to table this.
Yeah, is there, is there, I'm calling a question on the table.
What happens next?
I'm calling, let me, I'm going to call a question on the table. Is there, here's a second.
Motion is second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Question? They? Okay, question?
I was just curious, what happens next? Where do you go from there?
I have no idea.
Well, obviously, the temple has to be committed.
We have to, we have to send, we have to send notice to the temple that this is, this is part of the conversation now, and we want to seek their, their input.
They did provide a letter early on.
Yeah, I've had some conversations with council for the synagogue some time ago, and I continue to stay in touch with her, so...
So either we hold a special meeting, or we get together informally, but I think they have to...
I think in view of the discussion tonight, I don't think we can do it informally. I think they should be here and participate with the residents in this discussion, because in addition to the impervious surface issue, which may have a modest improvement, in addition to that, there are folks who have expressed an opinion as to whether it should be there or should not be there, and they ought to be here for that discussion.
The road, you mean?
Yeah, the access road.
Right, exactly.
Okay, you'll let me know when, and if this means we'll be scheduled.
Of course.
Thanks.
Thank you. What was the vote for table?
Four and one. Okay, Treasurers Report's next on the agenda of August 18, 2015. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second. Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
And then the bills list for August 12, 18, 2015. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We're going to have our pension meeting on Tuesday, February, September 15 at 4:00 p.m., and the Township Board of Supervisors meeting will be Tuesday, September 15 at 5:00 p.m. We're going to have our open house on August 27, 10 to 12, and Thursday, September 10, 6 to 8. And the township is, we're going to be closed on Monday, September 7 for Labor Day. Gift of Life, the Red Cross Blood Drive is Friday, September 11, 2 to 7, in the Red Activity Center. The Fido floated Fanny, Fanny Chapman Park is September 12, from 12:30 to 4. There are details and information and requirements found on doilstownrec.com. The Leaf and Guard Yard Waste Recycling is Doylestown Township residents only. Drop-off site is Saturday of each month from March to December, 9 to 11, off the New Britain Road Access. CB Cares and Doylestown Township Global Event, a concert at Covenant Bank in Central Park is September 19, from 6 to 9 p.m. We need volunteers for planning at the Bridgepoint Park at, on October, October 3, 9 to 12 noon. And we're going to be back in school on Monday, August 31, so everyone, please drive carefully. Seeing no other business, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you for your patience and your contributions to tonight's meeting.